Oh, and there's Ralph. Okay. Good morning. I will now, this is Jane Tab. I will now call the Jefferson County Commission meeting to order for September 3rd, 2020. Commissioner Lawrence Zetti, will you recite the Pledge of Allegiance for us all?
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on. I just, I don't see their faces, so I'm just going to say good morning to Commissioner Hudson in Compton. I'm assuming you're on the line. Stephanie said you were.
Yeah, I'm here Jane. Josh.
Okay. Caleb too?
Yeah, good morning Jane.
Okay, good morning. All right. First item of business is the approval of the minutes.
No move.
I'll second it with a minor correction. Someplace in here, oh, page seven at the bottom under new business, the motion by Mrs. Nolan, and it's just a minor correction. My name is, a couple of letters in my name are transposed, so just with that correction.
Well, and I have a question too on page eight. That, it says, was the consensus of the Commission to schedule a joint evening meeting pertaining to the topic, and we're talking about fire and rescue and combined ambulance fire fee for Thursday, November 4th at 7:00 PM. And I thought it was on November 5th. I don't know why.
No, we decided to do it on a Wednesday evening. We'd been doing those meetings on Wednesday evenings, so we decided to keep that. It's the day after the election.
Okay, all right. So it's Wednesday, November 4th, or what day is it? Let's see.
I have it on my calendar as Wednesday, November the 4th at 7:00 PM.
Okay, so we do need to correct the Thursday to a Wednesday then. Okay, because I just don't want the public or commissioners like me to be confused on when it is. Okay. So, motion on the floor to approve the minutes with the minor corrections is noted. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we're moving on to approval of accounts payable. For August 27th.
I'll move your approval accounts payable for August 27th, 2020, in the amount of
Second?
Do we have any questions or discussion on that? All in favor of approving accounts payable for August 27th, 2020, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Accounts payable for September 3rd, 2020.
I'll move approval of accounts payable for September 3rd, 2020, in the amount of
I'll second that.
All right. Questions? Discussion? All those in favor of approving accounts payable September 3rd, 2020, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to manual checks, August 28th, 2020.
Let me see.
I move approval of checks for August 28th, 2020, in the amount of $1,914.44.
Second?
Okay. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving manual checks for August 28th, 2020, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Manual checks for September 4th.
I'll move approval of manual checks for September 4th, in the amount of $14,500.
I'll second that. You have any questions or discussion on it? All those in favor of approving manual checks for September 4th, 2020, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we're down to payroll for August 20th, 2020.
I'll move approval of payroll for August 20th, 2020, in the amount of $276,246.43.
I'll second. Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve payroll for August 20th, 2020. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Stephanie, are there any changes to the agenda, or any announcements you need to make?
I do not have any changes or any announcements.
Okay. We're moving on to public comment. Stephanie, you tell us what's happening.
We do have one written public comment. For anyone else who is an attendee at the meeting today, if you would like to make public comment, you can use the raise your hand icon, and I will unmute you, and then I'll be able to give public comments. So you can either raise your hands, or you can send me a comment, and I'll unmute you as well. But I prefer the raise your hand, but if it's not, if you're raising your hand and you're not getting anywhere, you can send me a comment or a question, and I'll unmute you that way. So while we're waiting for anyone in the audience who'd like to make public comment, I will go ahead and read the written public comment that we received. And this is from Mr. David Tab. "I, David Tab, a lifelong resident/taxpayer, protest the Jefferson County Commission (JCC) hindering residents/taxpayers from their recorded public comment. It is time to reopen the meetings to the public comment, or stop making decisions that affect the resident taxpayer of this county, such as appointments, purchases, projects, new and old, permits, studies, or any nonessential approvals and/or actions. It appears the JCC and the Jefferson County Administrator have yet to release the FIOA of the 12 proposals/fids connected to the proposed courthouse complex. It appears the JCC has failed to sit properly for the approval of minutes since March 17th, 2020. If the JCC was not sitting properly to approve the minutes, then the Commission was not proper to hold a meeting. The approval of manual checks is just wrong. If you have a budget, just stick to it. How are you going to approve manual checks for September 4th, 2020, when you haven't listed what it's for?" Public comment. "It appears the agenda packet was sent this time." Hooray! Presentation number six, Michelle Gordon, Finance Director, review of FY 2020. "The FY 2020 budget accounting is not clear. The revenue portion is marked as a deficit. The expensive portion is marked as income. Why are you marking revenue as a loss, when in fact you receive 2.5 million above budget?" Review and approval of the FY 2021 State Budget Revision General Fund. "The addition of $103,654 to the county commission budget is not clear as to what the funds are appropriated for. Is this where you get your money for all the manual checks?" New business number eight, "Discuss request for funding COVID-19 pandemic block grant 100,000. It appears the request is only for $59,556, only three fire departments listed, where the other fire departments have poured about this. If you receive the full $100,000 grant, are you going to use this for manual checks as well? It is clear that the Jefferson County Commission is playing games with the taxpayers' money, and COVID-19 is another tactic to keep the taxpayer in the dark. The public reserves the right to call out the public officials to follow the required laws to ensure the constitutional rights of the public. The government's order to stay at home deprives the public of notice and comments without reimbursement provisions. This is affecting every resident and business owner to be responsible for all loses, including the government. It is hard to be safe with the current county commission at this time." And I don't see anyone who's raised their hand. If there's anyone who is interested in making public comment, can raise your hand. But I'm not seeing any takers.
Okay.
Great.
All right. Well, just reiterate that the public is allowed to make public comment while we're on the webinar, and I know it's a different procedure and somewhat confusing for folks that aren't used to it, but try it, and we'll work with you if we can't get you on, and we'll do everything we can to include the public, the live public comment. And if you can't get that, you know, there's always email, and all the emails for commissioners are forwarded to us. So we do receive all those emails of public comment. Okay. I see the sheriff is online. Tell us what you have in your list here of things.
Yes, Members of the Commission, there are several items that I have that I want to discuss with you today. First is a employee reclassification and pay adjustment. We have had, we have a vacancy in the, in the front office, in the sheriff's office, and we have an employee who came on as, we thought as an 80-hour employee, but came on as a 70-hour employee. A lot of confusion over the past few years about how that works. Anyhow, with the departure, I think I told you at the last meeting, we had the departure of Jenny Lemmons, who resigned to become a magistrate assistant in Berkeley County. We had a vacancy, and so what I'm trying to do first is to get you to agree to allow me to convert or classify the first employee as an 80-hour employee, and to increase her salary. So that would be Emma Brown to be made an 80-hour employee with, at step two, which is a low step, and her, her salary would then be set at $32,000. As you know from the past, I've, I've always, I've not done what other elected officials have done, I've come in and brought people in at the beginning salary, even if the budget would allow otherwise. Now, there is two steps to this. The next is to employ a full-time person, so I want to explain that to you as well, for the vacancy that exists. And that person I'm asking, that's the person I'm asking to be employed, is Cynthia Resmer, and he come in as an 80-hour employee at grade two, at the minimum salary the county has of $31,559. Now, I can tell you that, that this has some budget implication, but there is more than enough money in my budget to do this without any, any further action. And part of that is because I've had both a vacancy and a deputy who's left that we'll, we'll fill at some point in, in the future. And we also have a deputy who has been out on military leave, not, not getting paid by the county. If you'll recall, when you're on military leave, you're paid by the county for 30 days in a calendar year, and then you're, you're simply on your military pay for the rest of the time. That employee is not scheduled to come back until October, and we actually got email last night that says that because of concern about COVID-19, they may not release that whole group, and may hold them for at least another six months. So obviously, if that happens, that won't be, be the problem. Anyhow, so the, I wanted to explain both of the, the front office employees to do that. And they would simply get the same kind of, of consideration that the other full-time employees in, in the front office have now. Anyhow, so my, my first request is that the Commission approve a reclassification and salary adjustment to Emma Brown, to an 80-hour, grade-two employee, and with a, an increase her salary to be set at $32,000 per year.
My, my question is, and I know you have vacancies, and then, you know, the fellow out serving military, but if you have all your employees on deck, would your budget be able to cover everyone? Because, I mean, that's where you'll be, or the next sheriff will be eventually. So I want to make sure we're not setting up something that will cause problems in the future.
Well, the, I mean, I have to operate in the budget that I have, and this budget can clearly accomplish that. Michelle's on, she can sort of help explain to you, there would, if, if, if everybody was in place, and everybody was getting everything that they wanted, at the present time, there would be a need for some modest budget adjustment.
The sheriff and I discussed the amounts that he was talking about. For the new person coming on, the salary is exactly the same as the person that was leaving, so there's really no budget adjustment for that. For the existing employee, it would be about a $4,042,000 increase in his budget, ongoing. I do maintain an amount in the Commission's line item for requests such as this, for out-of-the-norm increases, and this is really the first request he's actually brought to me for use of that money. I've gotten requests from other departments over the years, but this is the first time he's tapped into that money. So I don't foresee it being a problem, simply because we do carry money, and we keep it set aside for requests like this.
Okay, all right. Anyone else have questions?
Yeah, this is Patsy, and I do. So Sheriff, I know that when an elected official is leaving office, they have to maintain a 50% budget there for the next sheriff to carry on the first part, the last half of the fiscal year. So my question to you, is this going to impact that at all?
No, no. The, the, the budget when I leave will have more than 50% for the new sheriff.
Okay. Um, so, I don't think I have any other questions about that. I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that you're, so, so the, the the person that you want to increase to a step two, is she a new employee?
No, she's an existing employee. She's an excellent employee. She's done, she's done terrific work. But when we look at the pay schedule the way that it is, and, and, you know, that we want to do is give her a reasonable amount of money, and she would make a little bit more than the, than the brand-new employee. So it's really a matter of equity. Otherwise, she could potentially be left. If you would approve the, the second part, we'd, we'd be, we'd have the newest employee potentially making more than, than the other employee. So again, Michelle may have some comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that Emma is currently a grade two. The difference, or what he's requesting is that she be increased from a 70-hour, bi-weekly employee to 80-hour employee. So it's really not changing her step. Her grade is a step, is a grade two, and she will remain a grade two. She, it's increasing her hours worked per week. And Pete and I discussed how that would work as far as them taking a half unpaid lunch, you know, at some point, either, you know, just extending their workday from 8:30 to 5:00, or 9:00 to 5:30, just to get them to that 80-hour benchmark, rather than taking that, that hour unpaid lunch and working nine to five. So we've already discussed some of those hours, and how to keep them consistent with how it's working in other departments. But the, the change for her is increasing her hours from 70 to 80. Her, her grade and step aren't changing.
Okay. That, that helps. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
I just have to say that when I was prosecutor, I never did figure out the 35 and 40-hour thing. It, it was always that thing off in the distance that we all tried to work with. But I, I think we all know at some point during the next year, that there'll be a problem with the budget. And what it exactly would be, I guess, depends when vaccines show up and everything else, but it will be a problem in the future. And we, I think, I don't have any problem what we're doing. I just, I think we all have to be clear that at some point, we have to face the facts.
If we get an update on that today, don't we?
We do, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Point taken, Ralph. I, I too, I am concerned. But turning back to what the sheriff is requesting, do I hear a motion concerning Emma Brown? Well, I'll, I'll make the motion that we increase the salary from, for Emma Brown, and it's really due to a reclassification. She's been going from a 70-hour work week to an 80-hour work week at grade two, and her salary will be $32,000. That's a motion.
Second.
Did I get that correct, Sheriff?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Everybody clear on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Let me just say one thing about the, the new employee. She has lived in the county for a number of years. She was a, an HR and personnel, and, and she has great skills and qualifications. Quite frankly, she's way too qualified. She could probably do most every job that we have anybody in the county doing. But she's very interested in giving back to, to her community, and probably is taking a, a salary at about one quarter of what she was making previously. She, she's, as Mr. Lawrence Zetti pointed out a minute ago, she's one of those people who worked for United Airlines, and, and did work there, and, you know, was, was the best on the skills testing that we had. He's, obviously, if you work for the airlines, you're, you're, you're well-trained to deal with frustrated and angry people, which occasionally happens here at the office. We're actually very, very pleased to, to recommend Cynthia Resmer for that position.
Well, and I was going to ask you about that, Sheriff, because, you know, bringing a new employee at a grade-two level is a question that I had for you. And so, but based upon what you feel her qualifications are, you know, I think that answered my question.
And what's the effective date of her hire?
It would be on September 8th.
Okay.
Okay. And just one more, one more question for you. Is this, this is a, this is replacing a previous employee?
Jenny Lemmons, this would be Jenny Lemmons, who's, who's been gone a month. This will be her replacement.
Okay, all right. And I'll make the motion to approve the hire of Cynthia Resmer to the position of administrative assistant at 80 hours, grade two, and a salary of $31,000. And I don't know, what is it, $31,000?
559.
559. Okay, 31559.
Okay, and second, can we include the effective date would be September 8th?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, everybody clear on the motion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Sheriff, you have a few other things.
Yeah, I've got a couple of other things. You all have approved previously for us to dispose of some vehicles. Normally, we've, we've done that in a sheriff's sale of vehicles. Charles Town and many other places find an auction place to, to do the sales. So with your permission, what I'd like to do, and we'll come back, and I don't know if there's any more vehicles, other than the ones you've already approved, that we would, we would want to get rid of. But I just wanted to bring it to your attention that I'm going to explore with, with, with counsel, whether there's an appropriate way. There is some notice and advertising needs to be done to, to, to sell the cars, you know, by contracting with an auction. And, you know, nowadays, a lot of folks do it online.
Yeah.
And obviously, we don't need these vehicles anymore. They're not worth a whole lot of money, probably worth a little bit more than scrap in some cases. But, but anyhow, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that, that's what I wish to do. And obviously, what I always ask is if whatever the proceeds of those vehicles, you know, go back into the budget for, for vehicle.
Okay. Well, I think it's, you know, online auctions are pretty popular, and especially now, that's the way they're doing business. So I think it's worthy of exploration, if we can do it legally per state code.
Yeah. The other is that when, when the budget was approved, there was a budget for, for new vehicles. I've, I've talked to Michelle about this. If you don't recall, a year or more ago, I actually ordered vehicles in May. We didn't get them until February. This year, we're being told that if we order vehicles in September, they won't come until at least February. I think you all were at one point talking about not ordering vehicles until the new calendar year begins. If that's, if that's what happens, we would not have any ability to get any new vehicles this, this fiscal year. And I'm not sure how long it would be into the, the next fiscal year before we get them. The, they're telling us that if we ordered in, in September, that the likelihood is that the vehicles would, would not get to us until, till February. So what I'm looking to do is to get your permission to, to order the vehicles based on the budget now, since it is September, to hopefully get them, you know, in, in the new calendar year. Obviously, the expenses wouldn't come until then either.
I would prefer, given our current situation, and we're going to get an update, I believe, from Michelle, to later on in this meeting, to hold off on that decision. I'm just really not looking forward to hearing our budget numbers, and that, you know, that may be something we, we just can't promise right now. I don't, that's, that's my feeling. I don't know how other commissioners feel.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Patsy.
I was just going to say that I, you know, I, I know that our, having reviewed what we were given in the packet, I have some concerns as well. And I would like to wait until later in the meeting to see, after Michelle's presentation, to, to see where we are budgetarily, and, and hopefully, we'll still, we'll be able to, but I can't promise it at this point.
I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that. I, I understand you've got a lot of other things you have to consider in, in the process. So I'm, I'm perfectly fine to defer action on this till, till later. And if, if you don't act on it today, I'll probably come back and ask you again.
I'm sure you will.
The, the other is, I, I, given what you, you're talking about, I won't even, wouldn't even discuss it very much at this point. We have a vacancy. We're, we're trying to fill a vacancy with deployments and other things. I've got a deputy who will be delivering a baby in next month or so, will be out for a period of time. We're, we're, we're sort of shorthanded. And, and I do want to debunk at least one thing that people keep thinking is that somehow call volume is down. Call volume was down for a while, but it really was traffic.
Yeah.
If you'll recall, in, in, you know, Margate, Recall, in March and April, the traffic volume was insignificant in the county. And we are being told that unless it was a real serious issue not to pull people over for minor violations, even the stuff we might stop you for and not even give you a ticket for in most cases. And obviously, when people weren't able to renew registration and that kind of stuff, that changed it as well. But I do want you to know that the call volume is up, it's high. I did a thing a couple of weeks ago and looked from a year ago, a two-week period, to this year, a two-week period. The difference was in the two-week period, 1,002 versus 1,008. Not exactly a big change. And the other is, I just want you to recognize that, you know, when we talk about call volume and incidents, that's a, you know, that's a traffic stop would be the same as an armed robbery.
Yeah.
Number, and I can tell you, because we did some training with our guys in the last two days about domestic violence. And so we ran some statistics in anticipation of that. In Jefferson County, from April 1st to August 28th, there were 300 domestic violence calls in the county. 241 of them were in the county, responded to by the sheriff's office. So again, those are, hey, they're both dangerous situations. They're not something you can resolve usually in five or 10 minutes. And the other is, and I'm waiting to defer, I'll come back again if, as needed. But the other is, last week, we had three mental hygienes in a single day. And, you know, one of the things that we are finding with COVID is, as people seem to spend more time together, I think I've told you this before, those people who don't live well together and are forced to be in the same household, doesn't work out as well as it may have been if they just see each other for a short period of time. Talk to you about the possibility of getting another deputy. I think there's some savings and there would be some cost. But obviously, at this point, I'll defer with that. After you've had your budget discussions, review the budget going forward. So with that, I'll hang back and hopefully hear something more from you all after a while.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know it's a challenging time, you know, for all of us. Yeah, okay. All right. Moving ahead, next item on the agenda, I have Ms. Nikki Painter with elections. Nikki, are you on?
I am.
Okay, I don't see your shining face, so I'm a little disappointed. But I can understand you've got a lot going on. So tell us, tell us where we're at with the election process.
So as of right now, we have, or what I have for you today is the poll worker list. The Republican Executive Committee and Democrat Executive Committee did turn in both lists along with alternates. Hopefully, we have enough people. You will also notice in your packet that there is an additional list that was a list from the Secretary of State's office. They have a spot on their website where people can go in and sign up to become a poll worker. Those were not approved through the executive committees. I did let the executive committees know that we did receive it. However, I would use their alternate list that they approved through their executive committees first. And then, if, you know, we do have a large shortage of poll workers, then we would start using from the additional list. But I felt it was enough that I should give to the commission to approve all of the names.
Yeah. Well, and I know, you know, you can have a vacancy the morning of the election, something very unexpected. And sometimes, you know, a lot of folks aren't available to fill in at the last minute. So it's good to have many more names than you can possibly need.
Exactly.
Right. Does anyone have any questions for Nikki?
I don't have a question for Nikki, but I've reviewed the poll workers and the information that we were given. And I moved to approve the poll worker and alternate list as presented for the 2020 general election.
Second.
Okay. All right, the motion is before us. We have any questions or discussion? All in favor of approving the poll worker and alternate list as presented for the 2020 general election, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, Ms. Painter, I don't think it would hurt if you could review voting options. I registered online for an absentee ballot. Can you tell us about how that process is working? You know, I think you have mail-in requests too, or what are all the options for voting this year, this fall?
Sure, so just to kind of give you some numbers. In our office, we have actually entered 1,191 applications. Those are people that have either dropped them off in person or have mailed them in. Through the online portal, we have an additional 1,800 people who have applied through that online portal. We are going to start processing those this week. We were just given access to it, and they were kind of working some things out. And we wanted to wait until we were 100% ready for that portal. So we will start processing those this week. But anybody that wants to vote absentee, they can apply online using the online portal at govotewb.com. They can call our office, and we can mail you a paper form that you can fill out and send back to us. Or they can print the form online and send it in that way. So there's a couple of different ways that they can apply in person for an absentee ballot.
And so Nikki, I have a question for you. This is Patsy. When will the ballots actually be mailed out?
Ballots will be mailed out on September 18th.
Okay, I've had people ask that question, so I thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
And then, you know, just whoever is listening too, you know, the traditional voting method will still be in place too at your normal neighborhood polling place. So no excuse for not voting. If you have the will, there's a way to get it done, right?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
And I do have one more thing, and I think Stephanie might have to step in on this one. We received word yesterday that Jefferson Academy closed their doors effective as of yesterday.
Wow.
So.
I saw that, yeah.
That was something that was very unexpected. I did contact them as soon as we saw the Facebook post. They at first thought that we would be able to use them, but now they have decided they are selling the facility, so they cannot guarantee us that we can use their space. So I, as everyone is aware, and Stephanie is also aware, she did work in that precinct, there are no public buildings in the boundaries of that precinct. And it is a double precinct. So there are two full precincts that we would have to find a location big enough for. I did contact the city of Charlestown to use Charles Washington Hall, which is the above Bushel and Peck. There is an elevator. There's plenty of space for social distancing to actually have two precincts. It's actually bigger space than what we use currently at Jefferson Academy. The only thing is, we are now past the deadline to do a change. So we would have to go into an emergency precinct change, which you all would have to approve and then approve through the Secretary of State's office. I realize it's not on the agenda today, so I have asked Stephanie if it would be possible, could we get this done sooner than the next meeting?
A question I have is, I know that South Jefferson is closer. And is there a space there that could be used possibly? In addition, I know that they are already a precinct location or a polling place. So would there be any room in there to be able to have us vote there? Or do you think the church, I think it's Seventh Day Adventist, do you think they would reconsider?
The Seventh Day Adventist, I left them a message yesterday. The pastor is not in this area, and that is why they decided not to allow us to use their space anymore. And South Jefferson already has two precincts in that location. So that would be putting four precincts, and there's just not enough room there to have four precincts at South Jefferson Elementary. And I certainly don't want to have everybody have to come into town or go any further than what they would need to. But there's just simply not any public spaces out there that we could use.
Yeah, and I know parking is a problem also at the, in town. So, you know, that's something else. But hopefully, you'll be able to come up with something.
The good thing is, on Election Day, businesses are closed. You know, the banks are closed, county businesses are closed. So that will alleviate some of the parking situation here in town. But I'm certainly open for suggestions. It doesn't have to be at Charles Washington. That was just the biggest space that I could find, closest to the boundary that isn't obviously the best solution, but.
Yeah, I'm thinking, nothing comes to mind right now, but maybe if I looked at a map, something would click, but.
Having been the supply clerk in that precinct for many years, it's a big early voting precinct. The voters didn't particularly like Jefferson Academy. I received complaints every year about Jefferson Academy. So I think a lot of the people will vote early, as they have in the past, or take advantage of the absentee ballot process that we have. But I know in that area, it's, we had, Nikki actually had Todd map out the buildings that would be available. And we called everyone, and the people we called said no. And there aren't very many public buildings in that precinct. So, and I also used to live in that, I don't live in that precinct anymore, but I did for a while. So it is, Danny, on Election Day, it was always pretty slow, even though we were a large precinct, because most of the voters chose early voting.
Okay.
So, but I mean, if you guys can think of anything, I'm sure Nikki, you know, that's closer, I'm sure, you know, Nikki would reach out to them. But I think she's reached out to many of the buildings in that that would be available. And they're either not willing to let us use them, or they're just not available. And Nikki, is September, we have a meeting on September 11th, a public hearing. Is that too late? Did you want it before then?
And it's fine if you do. That should be fine, that's next Friday. So that should be fine, that'll allow us to confirm these, when we send the notice out to the voters, because it is on the second floor of a building. We'll have the information, we want to make sure it's clear, what entrance to use, that there's an elevator available, all of that. So that'll give us time to get all of that together and get the notices together. So the 11th should be fine.
Okay.
So do we need to take action on this today, Stephanie? Or we can wait till September 11th and?
I think we'll, because it's not on the agenda today, we'll wait and we'll add it on to that agenda for, since we're already meeting, we'll just throw that additional item right in the beginning. It shouldn't take long to approve it. And if anybody has any ideas about precincts, you can certainly contact Nikki in the meantime. But I think we'll just put it on for September 11th.
Yeah, so a polling place ideally has to be located within the precinct, the physical boundaries of that precinct. So that's the limitation, because I was thinking of, you know, Jefferson Academy's not that far away from Middleway. And then you have the churches there in Grantham Hall, but I don't know if that's in that precinct or not. So that's my only other thought on a possible location, so.
Is Page Jackson School precinct a voting precinct?
It is not. We do not use that school as a precinct.
Okay, I mean, that could be a possibility. It's not that, you know, the parking might, I mean, that's just a thought.
Yeah, well, we have some time to think on it some more.
And I can, I can actually, we have tried using the building, because part of where the Handy Stop, I don't know if that's what it's still called or not, that little convenience store in the front.
Yeah.
Part of that building is not used. However, the last time I contacted them, it's through a leasing company, and they wanted us to sign a lease for an entire year. So that obviously wouldn't work.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that, but since, yeah, since it's privately owned, and I know, you know, they do have, there's just the Handy Stop, but I know that there are some other spaces in there too, but I didn't know how that would work out, so. But, you know.
Well, that would have been ideal, probably, yeah.
Yeah.
Well.
We have the golf course there too, but that's, they have a bar in there, and that's probably.
Well, the golf course, actually, I thought about that, but one, I don't think it's large enough for two precincts. And also, I think it is owned or ran by a candidate that's currently on the ballot. So I don't, I didn't want to even get into that possibility of having questions brought up about that. So I just kind of have not, didn't want to consider that location. But if anybody comes up with another one, certainly get in contact with me, and I will be more than happy to contact anybody to ask them if we can use a facility, or, you know, if you think there's a better location than coming into town. So just let me know, please.
Okay, all right. Thank you for all your hard work, Nikki.
Thank you.
Okay, is that everything for you?
It is, I'm done.
Okay, all righty, thanks again.
Thanks.
Okay. I am, let's see, we're not too far off the timeframe. Item, agenda item number three. Jaclyn Milliron has an informal board update for the Charlestown Utility. Is she online?
She is.
Okay. Oh, good morning.
This is cozy. I've never been able to give a public comment in my slippers, so.
That's okay.
So thank you for allowing me to join you today, and I appreciate this opportunity. I am speaking as an individual board member of the Charlestown Utility Board. I hope everybody's doing well, given these circumstances. I gave a similar update in January of this year to the Charlestown City Council. So this is not unusual for me. I like to make sure that we're in communication. So I gave you kind of an outline, so we'll just start it with current topics and talk about the effects of COVID. I think that straight across the board is straightforward. It's affected everybody. But just from the utility standpoint, the effects of, financial effects have not been fully calculated yet. The staff is working with our customers to work on contracts with past due bills, given the circumstances of layoffs and whatnot. So they are working very diligently on that. The city had revised its work, return to work plan on August 12th. So just want to mention that CTUB typically follows the city guidelines. So whenever there's issues with COVID, we're, you know, informed, and then we take those actions that the city does. So anyway, let's move on to number two, which is exciting for us at the former PSD customer base. The tariffs of the three consolidated utilities were submitted to the Public Service Commission a while ago as a single document to avoid duplicate wording and such. And so the first major reduction happened right about and upon consolidation a year and a half ago for the sewer customers of the former PSD. We've got a reduction in the minimum from 2,000, from almost close to 3,000 gallons down to 2,000 gallons. And this really affected our conservative consumers and those in fixed or lower income brackets. So that helped them out. And it's about an $8 a month reduction, which is pretty significant for those folks. The second reduction went to unmetered water and sewer customers, making the flat consumption level from 4,500 gallons to 3,500 gallons per month. So they experienced a bit of a change there or a reduction. So some expected cost savings from consolidation were recognized in special expenses, like legal, accounting, and engineering and rent. And that should not come as any surprise, because that was kind of predicted. So we are definitely. Um, so we are, uh, definitely experiencing, uh, a number of cost savings and efficiencies out of the consolidation. Um, you know, pump stations usually have a, a useful life of 30 to 50 years. And so C Tub is, uh, going about fixing and refurbishing PSD pump stations at a much lower cost than, uh, providing, you know, under, uh, larger projects. So I'm really happy about that. The in-house staff has really done a good job in, uh, doing that with the pump stations. So moving on to the financial and, and I did provide backing of those charts for you to see if I've made any errors, uh, please let me know. Um, so flipping over, uh, to the financial side, I gave you some graphs. Um, the numbers were derived from, uh, revenue expense reports during the fiscal year 2020. And they were annualized. So it gives you an idea of, um, what the PSD, uh, domestic means C Tub, that's how they label them themselves. And, and then the, of course, ransom sewer on top there. It, uh, you can see how, uh, the revenue source comes in. Um, I picked the three primary revenue sources there. Um, so it's, it just gives you a good snapshot of, uh, the last year that I've served on the board. And I've collected the data from the revenue expense reports. Um, there are some fluctuations, as you noticed, uh, in Jan- December of the 2019. There was a sharp, uh, decrease in the PSD and that I'm, I'm not sure that's probably attributed to the unmetered customer reductions, but, uh, maybe there were some other things going on. I don't know. Um, some noteworthy observations, um, is really, I'm, I'm looking at the COVID period, March to May, and I don't see a huge fluctuation, but again, uh, those numbers haven't come fully in yet. So we'll, we'll wait and see on that. Um, we are going to be, uh, you know, looking at the budget 2021, uh, this year and, um, and hopefully before the end of the year. Uh, and we'll be formulating, uh, we have to do another strategic plan by, in, in 2021. So that'll all be kind of worked out. Um, I gave a, I, I didn't put it on the sheet here, but I'm just going to tell you some really rough numbers we've collected. I've been monitoring the capacity improvement fees and the R and R fees or renewal and replacement project fee, uh, costs, and then the working capital account. Um, cap, the SIFs or the capital improvement fee for the sewers, about 1.9 million. The water is 1.4 million. These are rough, rough estimates here. Uh, R and R is 263,000, 479 is a water thousand. And the working capital is 702,000 and the water is 277,000. Those are estimates. So, uh, you know, we're doing very well financially and I'm, I'm kind of happy to see those numbers. Um, anyway, so moving on to the, uh, next, uh, item, uh, Route Nine Sewer Project. And people have been coining that the Super Sewer Project. Um, just want to report that everything appears to be financially running well. Uh, the record sheets are easy to follow and very transparent and there's no significant bid overruns, which would probably make any client who paid for the project very happy. So, um, adjusted, uh, completion date is now November of this year. Um, due to what I understand, uh, what was reported is, uh, due to delays in parts, receiving parts. So, um, that, that's, and then of course, that's probably due to COVID. So, um, anyhow, uh, so number five is Safe Drinking Water Collaborative. Um, I volunteered last year to, uh, be the C Tub representative on the Safe Drinking Water Collaborative. Um, it's a new group that was formed and their mission is, is source water protection through land conservation. You're probably familiar with that, some of you. Um, there are about five utilities involved in the collaboration and we meet and now we're meeting virtually just like here. Um, so you know, it's kind of, it's kind of fun to be at the, uh, start of an organization such as that. And it's a great, great public outreach for C Tub. Um, and, and again, I am the, uh, representative for that. We are working on our strategic plan for that group. Um, number six is website modifications. Hopefully, uh, we have moved away from the city's, um, webpage as C Tub becoming more independent. Uh, we have a new conference room, which is really nice. Um, everything is operational and they make the staff that does a great job at, um, doing the meetings and keeping everything on, on the schedule. So. Um, so the only thing that I will say about this is, uh, I hope to get all the PSD historical documents and audios restored for the public access on the C Tub website. We do have, uh, in the works, a, a new webpage being developed. So, uh, and, and that's because I have made very, very clear that my, um, one of my important issues is transparency. So, uh, somehow those documents from the PSD have not been, uh, hyperlinked or anything like that. So I'm trying to get those, uh, the public to be able to access those historical records, especially because we've only been consolidated for a year and a half. And so, you know, it's important. All right. So let's, uh, move on to future topics. Um, we have a renewal and replacement project, huge, um, that's going to be about $4.3 million. And this includes extensive work to both the Tuscaloosa plant and the main Charlestown plant. Um, so that's, that's going to be a, a biggie and, um, that's underway, uh, not as far as the, the financing part is underway. Um, the ransom mon- and the modified Flowing Springs project. So the ransom project I don't know a whole lot about. Um, I haven't been given much information about that, other than it had been listed as a $2 million project. Um, as far as the Flowing Springs project, um, it's been selectively engineered. Um, so we've reduced the cost of, of that significantly from, um, pre-consolidated values. Um, so we're, I'm hoping, I've been an advocate in, in, at the utility, um, to, when we talk about obligated to serve, I always kind of chime in and say what we're not obligated to pay. Um, because a lot of the project is for new capacity. And so I'm trying to really advocate the use of SIF money uh, and/or, um, to have, uh, make sure that, uh, it doesn't apply to rate increases. Um, so. Yeah. So my obvious goal in that is to equalize rates at the lowest possible rate. So. Uh, the next thing, um, well, with that is map, I, I have map overlays and I, this is a request that I would like to ask from the commission. And that is to take the existing, um, sewer map that we have for C Tub and do an overlay of the county subdivisions. Because we are a mixed bag here with county and city, um, development. Um, I would, I think it would be, um, good for the, for the people to see exactly where the, the utility serves and whom we are serving. So, uh, I'm just going to ask if that is a possibility. We, I know that the county has a great engineering department with great mapping GIS stuff. So, uh, just wanted to know if, if that would be a possible, um, venture, uh, to do a collaborative, if you will, with, uh, C Tub. Um, and, and I'm asking that as an individual board member because, because the county, um, trying to, you know, put these things together, making sure that everybody gets, uh, the information. And a map is a, a great way to show a lot of information, uh, without using words. So anyway, uh, so mission statement and budget workshop. So those are up next, uh, for us. We are working on a mission statement. It'll be the first. Um, I hope we can further expand on this to provide goals and values as an agency. Uh, the goal is to increase public information about C Tub. And of course, it keeps us on the path. Right? Um, another thing we were working on, of course, um, is the budget. And so we have now a full fiscal year of information, financial information to be able to, uh, see where we are at with, uh, the consolidated systems. Um, and of course, this leads into rate equalization, um, the next phases. Um, while there have been some strides made to achieve this mentioned, I mentioned earlier, C Tub is about a year behind, uh, when it, and it's projected equalizing with ransom. Um, so customer rate equalization for those, those two should happen maybe within the next six months, unless something catastrophic happens. Uh, then depending on the projected outcome of the budget review, C Tub may be working, looking at a first in a series of incremental rate adjustments, which will lead us to full rate equalization with PSD. And I hope, uh, we plan to achieve that, uh, full rate equalization sooner than eight and a half years, which is what's remaining on our contract. So. Which, uh, leads us into my last point of, uh, update is the, what's called Article 147 Utility Ordinance. Now, just to give you a little background, Article 147 in the city is an ordinance, uh, which stipulates the operation of C Tub. Uh, it includes such things as procedural appointments to the board. On May 18th of this year, Charlestown City Council made significant changes to the, their Article 147. Those changes did not align with the PSD asset agree, purchase agreement in a couple of key areas. Uh, one related to the actual county seat appointment process. Uh, so two members of the public, uh, just to let you know, gave formal public, uh, comment. Uh, one of them was me and one of them was a former PSD board member. So we, they were aware of the concerns that we had, but much to our disheartenment, um, they passed the ordinance anyway. So I would like to have some discussion with you on this matter. Um, at a minimum, I feel maybe the Public Service Commission should be notified. Uh, I don't know what the county commission could do, but I, 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 I'm open to some suggestions or discussion on that last issue.
Well, um, uh, you've given us a very interesting report and, um, I'm sure we can, I think we have, uh, informally discussed the, uh, the new, uh, Article 147 and the appointment process. Um, I think it would be best if, uh, we want to discuss that to make it an, its own agenda item. Um, so it's clear and the public is notified that we would be discussing it again. You know, we weren't too happy with it either. At least I wasn't.
Good to know.
Think, you know, I think this, and this was the, you know, hate to say I told you so, but this was the problem and the issue that I had initially was just handing over the Public Service District to Charlestown Utilities because the county residents have very little say. We have very, a, a very small voice that may speak loudly, but it's one vote on that board. And so that has been my concern from the very beginning. Uh, you know, county residents deserve better. Uh, we gave that away when we made this deal with Charlestown. And so I, I don't know what that leaves us, I mean, I don't know where that leaves us, but I think it does need to be on the agenda for another time. So, uh, so that we can have that discussion.
Yeah. This is a, this is Commissioner Compton. I'm going to have to absolutely disagree with Commissioner Nolan on that. Uh, first and foremost, I, uh, and if you look at what Rantzen agreed to is the exact same thing as a county. And, uh, I recognize certain commissioners were not PSD customers. I happen to be one that was, and it was blatantly unfair to be paying 30% higher rates as a PSD customer. If we look at the numbers alone, there has been no increases to Charlestown or Rantzen customers, but there have been significant decreases to PSD customers in the voice of fairness and what's equitable. And I'd like to point out the new minimum thresholds, which specifically are geared towards low income and elderly residents that do not use much sewer capacity. That's a significant drop for those individuals. So there are many positive things that have come out of this consolidation that has helped low income families. Nothing is ever perfect and I recognize nothing will be perfect. But I think there was a big misstep by Charlestown City Council by not informing the county commission out of courtesy. They were making these changes and we collectively unanimously sent a letter to Charlestown informing them of our displeasure as to what took place. So I'm more than happy to have a further conversation on Article 147 and they should not have done that. But again, the positives of consolidation have far outweighed the negatives. That's just my opinion.
Well, and that, that might be true and, and I'm not going to get into this right now because it does need to be on the agenda. The one thing I do agree with you about Josh is that Charlestown should not have done what they did to change that, um, to change Article 147 without input from the county commission. And, and that was my number one problem with this entire consolidation. So, but we can put that on the agenda for another time.
That's fine. I agree. And, uh, I think we'll find some common ground there. One last thing, I just want to say Ms. Milliron has done a fantastic job representing county residents on C Tub. We may not always agree with what she's doing or her tactics, but she has represented county residents wonderfully.
Yeah. Um, I, I can agree with that, uh, Josh, too. Ms. Milliron, you've, you've presented a very comprehensive report. Um, I'm wondering, um, to if you can get a request from the C Tub board for this map overlay and the details. And then we can consider that and check with our staff and see if that's doable or not, or if the commission wants to engage in that. Um, just a little more detail and it really should come from C Tub. I know, you know, you're just one individual, but if you can get the board to make that request, I think it would be, you know, a proper consideration for us too.
Yeah, I agree with that. And, uh, and I agree, this is a great presentation and good information in here, Ms. Milliron. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Thank you. And, um, just, just, uh, as a closing, I, uh, again, um, I, I don't, maybe I didn't emphasize enough and, and Commissioner Compton did do that is, um, the, the benefits of consolidation did outweigh any of these technical issues. And, and for, I don't know why, uh, this happened with Article 147. Um, but I think, uh, it would be helpful for the county rate pairs to be, um, to, to have that addressed. And, and certainly, uh, I will tell you that thus far today, uh, there has been no, the Public Service Commission is not, they hold the contract, they're the ones that approved the contract. So they did not, they haven't received any of those changes to the purchase agreement. So I, I'm, you know, I think, you know, that's a start. So moving forward, if, if we could have this on, on the agenda, uh, sooner than later, I, I would appreciate that, um, in the future.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Ms. Milliron? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. You too. Uh, Stephanie, uh, next we have, uh, Mr. Bowen talking about, let's see, late eight, late, late ambulance fees. Is that correct?
Yes, I don't see him on here. We've heard nothing from him. Um, he was, he didn't want to pay the, the late fees that would have been assessed. Um, hold on a second. Will I pull it up? Um, but we haven't heard from him. We've been, you know, we've contacted him using the information provided, but we have not heard from him. Um, so he was upset about the late fees. So that was for those properties from 2016. So I guess he's asking you to exonerate them, but I can't find any reason.
Okay. So that's, that was my question. It's 26, because we, we delayed late fees this year, didn't we?
Yeah, I think he, since it's from 2016, he maybe have been part of the collections process. I'm not sure. Um, it doesn't really provide a whole lot of detail on this agenda. And I wasn't, I wasn't aware of what his issues were. So, um, it looks like there are three properties and he doesn't want to pay a total of $60 in late fees. And, you know, when, uh, people come in, we, we don't have the ability to waive them. I don't know that there's any reason to waive them. Everyone else pays them when the, when they do.
Yeah. Without hearing from him and without knowing if it's just because he doesn't want to pay them, just because he didn't pay his ambulance fee, I'm not going to agree to waive them. I don't really have any good, good reason to. I mean, they're not that much. What are they, $5? Um, so, I mean, I, I don't see that we need to take any action on this.
I guess my question is, we changed those late fees. I don't know if we made those retroactive or not, but it may not be $5 for 16 or 17.
It wasn't for 16 or 17. I think he owes a total of $60 in late fees, um, going all the way. So his total late fee is from 26, going back to 2016 is $60.
And I agree with that to hear on this. Yeah, I agree with Patsy here on this, I mean, I have speculation as to why we should waive them.
Right, I, you know, I'd like to know, too, the details, he hasn't presented them and we don't know why. And that would be helpful if we wanted to consider waiving them, but at this point, I'm not in favor of taking any action either. Any other comments on that issue?
No.
All right. So, on item number four, we're taking no action. Is that agreeable with everyone?
Yes.
We agree to do nothing, yes, okay, all right, thank you. I'll move on to item number five, we're just a couple minutes early. Is Ms. Laura Kuhn online? There she is, good to see you, Laura. Let's see, we need your.
There I am.
And I see the fellow in the background, too, so I think we'll be talking about him, go ahead.
So, I realized a few, about a month ago, that Brian's 30th anniversary was tomorrow. So, that's pretty cool that he's been here with the county that long. It was funny because we had an employee who had a birthday yesterday, she turned 28, so she wasn't even born yet when Brian came to work here. You know, it's pretty awesome. So, I put together a little resolution for Brian to recognize this accomplishment, and I can go ahead and read it if that's okay.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Whereas on September 4th, 1990, Brian Perkins began his employment with the Jefferson County Commission in the Maintenance Department. Whereas September 4th, 2020 marks the 30th anniversary of Brian's employment with the Jefferson County Commission. Whereas Brian has worked as a general laborer and mail clerk for Jefferson County and also in the honorary capacity, affectionately dubbed title, of parking lot police. I think there's a badge. Whereas 30 years of service is a superlative demonstration of Brian's dedication and loyalty to Jefferson County. Whereas 30 years of service is a significant milestone and should be commended. Therefore, be it resolved that the Jefferson County Commission celebrates Brian Perkins 30 years of service to Jefferson County and commends and congratulates him on this major milestone.
Yes, I think we can all vote in support of this resolution. This is an easy vote, Brian, and congratulations and thank you, thank you for your service.
Yeah, and this is Patsy, and, you know, I've been around a long time. I remember when Brian came to work for the county, that's how long I've been around. And, you know, there wasn't anything that needed to be done or anything that you needed that Brian wouldn't do, you know, within his job description. And sometimes he would even, you know, even if it wasn't in his job description, something needed to be done, he would just do it. And so, I certainly appreciate Brian and all of his years of service. And, you know, he's been friendly, outgoing, helpful. He's just exactly the kind of employee that everyone wants to have within their, within their organization. And so, Brian, thank you and congratulations on a job well done.
Now, Brian, I was only 10 when you started, but I do wanna say thank you for all the help you give me over the years. Thank you.
Brian, this is Commissioner Compton, I've not been around as long as some of the others, but I've heard nothing but good things about you and that's quite the achievement. County residents are lucky to have you. Thanks for your service, Brian.
All right, that was Commissioner Hudson, I hope you heard that.
So, I'm happy to make the motion to approve the resolution and authorize honoring Brian for his, recognizing Brian for his 30 years of service and authorize a commissioner's to sign.
Yeah. Okay, been properly moved in the second to approve this resolution of recognition of 30 years of service, which is hard to come by, and we do appreciate it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Congratulations, Brian, keep up the good work. You're always a shining face, except I think when you're on parking lot police duty, but you get a little serious then, but it's always good to see you around the county buildings and taking care of all the details that come up every day of the issues that arise. So, thank you once again. And thanks, Laura, for catching that and bringing it to our attention. Yeah, it is kind of amazing how time flies.
Yes, you're welcome, thank you.
All right. Okay, anything else? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
We're a little early for Michelle, but if she's online and wants to go ahead, that is fine with me.
All right, I'm here.
Okay.
I will start with the review of the fiscal year 2020 budget to actual as of June 30th, 2020. And you should have that in your packet. The first page of the packet is our general revenues and expenditure, general fund revenues and expenditures by department. The first section is our revenues. I highlighted a few of the items in your packet, so hopefully you can see that highlighting. The first thing I wanted to point out would be our ambulance fees, in-kind contribution to the volunteer fire department. That's something we've never recorded before. I recorded a $916,000 in-kind contribution to the volunteer fire departments because they retain the county's portion of ambulance fee billings. The actual ambulance fee billing is actually about 1.2, 1.3 million, and I took 80, or sorry, 75% of that to record the county's in-kind contribution. That recognizes the fact that they're providing the equipment and then the rest of the services are being provided by our paid fire, our paid EMTs. The other revenues that kinda had some discrepancy or issues that I wanted to point out would be federal grants. We had originally budgeted for about $300,000 in federal grant revenue, however, we received 2.4 million. That increase is a result of receiving 2.2 million in CARES Act funding in fiscal year 20 for COVID, the virus, COVID-19 response activity from March 1st through June 30th of 2020. It was an unexpected revenue and we did not receive it until the end of the fiscal year.
Michelle, quick question, so, just so county residents are aware, that increase in revenue, is that offsetting other revenue we have lost? Or is that just new revenue outside that?
We had already done a budget revision to reduce our gaming revenues and our gambling revenues and our hotel occupancy revenues. So, it's kinda sort of offsetting revenues that we lost. But you're not really seeing it on here because I had already done a budget revision to reduce those revenues. So, they look like they're breaking even, even though I did a huge budget revision there at the end of the year to reduce them significantly.
Okay, so, we're not essentially gaining $2 million more dollars. We're, it's more netting towards the zero amount versus we're green 2,000 than we were before.
Correct, and we have, our departments worked very hard at reducing operating expenditures and reducing overtime during that time as well to help offset the reductions in revenues also. So, it's not additional revenue, it's revenue we didn't anticipate, but it was offset by revenue we had already cut because of the COVID response.
All right, thanks.
Okay.
And in some cases, there were increased expenditures for PPE, for making sure that we could facilitate our online go-to webinar, for making sure we could facilitate public meetings, for making sure that employees were able to telework. So, we had all these unexpected measures to clean buildings and sanitation and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, people don't understand it, but maintenance are in our buildings all the time, you know, after working hours, re-sanitizing everything. So, it's a huge load to lift to keep all the buildings that are accessible to the public and for our workers clean right now.
The other revenue, the next revenue that I've highlighted would be horse and dog racing, that's another one of our gambling revenues. That $7,000 fiscal year 20 budget is actually a revised budget. We had originally budgeted $10,000 or $12,000 and we still came in at $6,500, about $621 less than that revised budget compared to last year's $10,000 budget. Our hotel occupancy tax, I already bought it down to 670,000 and it still came in at only 632, 38,000 less than I had budgeted. That money is a dedicated revenue source, it goes 50% to the CBB, about 48% to Parks and Rec, and then the other remaining, you know, couple of percent goes to the Historic Landmarks Commission and Arts and Communities. So, those organizations are feeling a hit as a result of this revenue.
Yeah.
You just compare it to fiscal year 19, we received 771,000 in fiscal year 19, so that's $139,000 loss.
Wow.
Table games, the revised budget for that was 536,000, we received 508,000. Compared to last year, we received 635,000. So, that was down about 126,000 compared to the prior fiscal year, and that was also part of my end-of-year budget revision.
I'm actually kinda surprised that one isn't more, but yeah.
It was, both of that and video lottery, they were both trending higher for the fiscal year. We would have had our best year in probably 10 years.
Yeah.
Video lottery revenue, the revised budget for that was 2.3 million, and I think we revised that down from almost 2.9 million. We see 2.4 million, and you can see the prior year, we received $3 million. So, we had a $571,000 loss of revenue from that. Total revenues for the end of the fiscal year, oh, the unexpected revenue, I didn't highlight it, but wine and liquor tax legislation changed January of 2018 so that the county would start receiving wine and liquor tax for all of the establishments in the county instead of the, prior to that, we were only receiving it for county wine and liquor stores and meaning that we didn't tax for those located inside of a municipality or incorporated entries. Now, we receive it for all of them. So, that increased our wine and liquor tax from an annual of about 40,000 to 255,000. That was definitely expected. The total revenue for the end of fiscal year 20 was 27.1 million compared to our budget of 24.5 million. So, we had about 2.5 million in unexpected revenue and it's all a result of the CARES Act funding. Expenditures by department, most of the departments stayed, looked pretty normal. I just wanted to point out that on the bottom of that first page, our regional jail fees, we had originally budgeted 1.5 million and jail fees came in at about 760,000. So, we had a $40,000 savings. That was a result of three different components. First component would be the prosecuting attorney is reviewing the bill more closely to make sure that people aren't on there and that the dates are correct. Our sheriff's department is working very closely to ensure that our, some of the offenders with lesser offenses can actually be released on home confinement. And then, the third part would be legislation changed at the state so that the state picked up the bill at the date of sentencing versus the date, or I'm sorry, the date of conviction versus the date of sentencing. That was the biggest part of it, but the three, the things working in conjunction with each other really helped reduce that bill. We hit a high of about 1.8 million there. And you can see that the prior fiscal year was 1.2 million.
Yeah, that's good news.
And on the second page, the offset to the $916,000 increase in in-kind contribution for ambulance fees to volunteer fire departments is shown as an increase to the volunteer fire departments. We budgeted 577,000 for our annual allocation, but because of that in-kind contribution, we actually contributed almost 1.5 million to the volunteer fire departments. Total expenditures were 24.3 million for operating expenses. In the transfers to other funds, I just wanted to point out that we had budgeted 1.7 million in transfers to other funds to our capital outlay fund. I only transferred $600,000 because of the coronavirus. I didn't want to put us in a position where we would be scrambling to try to find funds at the end of the year. Once money is transferred to the capital outlay fund, we cannot transfer it back out. So, did not transfer that whole amount, so we had $1.1 million in savings as a result of not transferring that money to the capital outlay fund. So, at the end of the fiscal year, our beginning fund balance was 6.3 million. We had a surplus of 3.0 million and that's a result of the 2.2 million in CARES Act funding and the 1.1 million that I did not transfer to the capital outlay fund. So, our total ending fund balance is 9.3 million for the end of the fiscal.
Okay.
Any questions about any of the budget to actual information?
Michelle, one quick thing, so that CARES funding revenue we got, is that unrestricted revenue or can that only be used for certain things?
Well, because it's in the prior fiscal year right now, our financial policy says that it must be transferred to either the Financial Stabilization Fund or to the Capital Outlay Fund, and our practice is normally to transfer it to the Capital Outlay Fund. It's money that we receive for expenses we've already incurred, so it's not necessarily an unrestricted revenue, we've already paid for it and we're getting reimbursed for what we paid for.
Okay, and all right, that's fine, I just, if there, I'm gonna throw us out there, I mean, Parks and Rec is taking a substantial hit right now. If there's any amount of money we could possibly divert over there, I think it'd be very helpful. I mean, they're in a really big bind right now. I just wanna, I'm not saying I'll agree to a certain amount, I just say if there's a possibility of doing something like that to some extent, I think we should seriously look at it.
Okay, and I just wanted to point out the financial implications of that. That would have to be a one-time contribution to them and that would qualify for use of fund balance. Because right now, all that money is in fund balance. Fund balance shouldn't be used for ongoing operating expenditures. So, if we felt like we would, you know, need to support Parks and Rec in future years, my recommendation would be no. But because this is a one-time expense, I believe it would qualify for use of fund balance. However, we would need to discuss that further or maybe at a different meeting, discuss their needs, get some input from them on how much they may need, and then discuss if we feel it's a worthwhile opportunity.
Yeah.
Yeah. I agree, I think.
Go ahead, Jane.
I'm sorry, I talked over you, I agree, I think we need, I think it's, I've been concerned about Parks and Rec and I know parents are concerned about Parks and Rec and are struggling, so, and they struggled somewhat through the summer, even getting the grass mowed. So, if, let's see, I can't remember who our liaison, is that Josh or is that Caleb?
I'm on there, Jane, I'll bring this up at the board meeting, next board meeting, to see if they're, they wanna look into it, if it's a possibility, if the commissioners are open to it as a one-time thing, not a long-going-on current.
Well, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ralph.
No, I was gonna, I know they were looking at getting a loan, has that gone through yet or are they still in the process of it?
Last I heard, they were actively doing it. I don't know if they've pulled any money from it, if it's been approved, I can provide an update, though. But as of right now, I don't think they've pulled any money from that.
Okay.
Well, did they get the loan, though? If they pulled money, if they haven't pulled money from it, it sounds like they've already gotten a loan.
Last I heard, they were going to apply for it, but it wasn't a loan where they have to pull money. It was almost like a stopgap measure at a very low rate of like 2% or something.
Oh, okay, okay, kinda like a bridge loan or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jane.
Now, I just would like the board to bring us, you know, some ideas, where they are, where they wanna go, and, you know, not that we have tons of money, but, and we're not through this COVID now, so I'll proceed with caution, but I wanna hear what their needs are.
Yeah, just one last thing, Patsy, the loan or grant type thing they were looking into previously required collateral, I know they were gonna put a park up they own potentially as that, they did not go forward with that proposal, so this is entirely different.
Yeah, and I'd like to know, I mean, if we do this, I'd like to know, I mean, you can't, you can't go back into the summer and have those, you know, hold those classes that they've already missed. So, going forward, I'd like to know what they, you know, what they planned, what they would do with any funding that we would give them.
Yeah.
My understanding of the loan that they had applied for was it's actually a CARES Act loan to help them with the payroll, to ensure that their full-time employees were employed. And the loan was actually a loan to grant, meaning that if they retained their employees for X number of years, it would turn into a grant, meaning they would not pay it back at the end of that term. But I'll let, I'll defer all of the details to them and I think it would be important for them to come in and provide us with the details and the potential request.
Yeah, and I think that, I think other agencies. Yeah, and I think that, I think other agencies have been able to do the same thing, and I think they, they were able to acquire maybe $150,000 and, but, you know, and it does turn into a grant if they don't, you know, they don't, if they're not able to pay it back.
Yes. To Michelle's point, you're accurate, Michelle. There's a subsequent one as well after that. So this is a little different.
Okay, so there's a second one that I'm not aware of.
Okay. Ralph, were you going to make a comment?
Well, I was going to ask Michelle a question, and you had emailed me that the, the funds, hopefully for the CARES Act are available till the end of the year, at least under the current legislation. My question is, assuming nothing gets passed in the meantime, what happens to us on January 1?
Yeah.
I mean, our budget looks very good right now with the CARES money, but what happens January 1?
Well, January 1 is really going to depend on whether or not there is a second wave or even a third wave in January of coronavirus. I believe that if we did have another wave of it and it extended beyond December 41st, I believe that the president at that time would, would most likely consult with Congress to pass another type of funding package for businesses, residents, and for municipal and county governments. But at this point, your guess is as good as mine. I can say they probably will do the same.
Well, I guess my question is, do we need to have a little cushion come January 1, or?
Yeah.
I don't, we have a lot of, we, the whole world has a lot of questions right now.
Yeah.
We can have a cushion because I have not been making those transfers to the capital outlay fund. So right now, we do actually have a cushion, and that'll be part of my budget revisions that I'll go over, I'll go over how much of that cushion we currently have, and that, say the same thing that I said last year, I won't make any of those transfers until the end of the fiscal year, till I'm sure and have a little bit more confidence in what the economy is going to respond to your shutdowns.
Thank you.
Okay. Michelle, you have more to go over with us, I'm sure.
The next page would be our video lottery revenue. Although the casino is open, they are open at reduced hours, and they are open at reduced capacity. So we did not receive any revenue at all, I believe, from May or June, or, and only a small amount for June. The amount we received so far in July for video lottery revenue is actually 8.8% less than what we received in July of 2019. So it's, it's not recovered, it has not recovered, and that's reduced hours and the reduced capacity. So based on that new trend of about a 9% decrease, I revised our budget estimate. We had originally budgeted 2.3 million for revenue for video lot, I'm sorry, 2.8 million for video lottery revenue. And I estimate that we're going to receive about 2.3 million. So I do have a budget revision included for fiscal year 21 to reduce our revenue by $500,000 for that estimate, based on the new COVID trend, and I believe that that will last at least through, it'll last through the whole fiscal year, honestly.
Yeah, I think so, too. Yeah.
The next page will be our table game revenue. Table games revenue is similar to our video lottery revenue. They're open now, but they're open at reduced capacity and reduced hours. So they are actually seeing a 13.6% decrease. So the revenue we received in July of 2020 was $40,000 compared to last year. It was a 13.6% decrease. So I used that 13.6% decrease to revise my revenue estimate for fiscal year 21. We had originally budgeted 564,000. I think we should revise that down to 470,000. So I have an $85,000 reduction included in the fiscal year 21 budget revision that I'll go over here in a minute.
Okay.
And then the last part of that page would be our jail fees, and I just kind of wanted to show you the trend on that. I believe we'll have some savings in fiscal year 20, well, the current trend of 90,000. I think will translate to a budget revision or a budget savings in fiscal year 21 as well. We budgeted 1.05 million for fiscal year 21, so I think we'll have a couple hundred thousand dollars in savings again in fiscal year 20, and help off that revenue.
Right, right. Okay.
The next item that I have is the budget revisions for year 21. The first one is for the general fund. State code requires that I revise the budget, the beginning fund balance of the current fiscal year to reflect the ending fund balance of the prior fiscal year. So our beginning fund balance was originally estimated or budgeted to be 4.6 million. It came in at 9.336 million, so I have to increase our beginning fund balance by 4.7 million in the new budget year. I am reducing horse and dog racing tax by 3,000 to from 1,500 to 6,500 to reflect that we're seeing reductions in that. Wine and liquor tax, unexpected revenue, we only got 30,000. I'm increasing that line item by 120,000 to 150,000. And then, of course, we've got gaming and video lottery revenue. I'm decreasing both of those by 85,000 and 520,000 to get them to the new COVID trend numbers for fiscal year 21. All of those budget revisions are offset by transfers to our capital outlay fund of 4.2 million. So right now, the way that this budget revision looks, we will have 4.45 million in transfers to the capital outlay fund at the end of the fiscal year if we don't have any other major reductions in revenue or any other major increases in expenditures. I am also recommending that for fiscal year 21, that we continue the cost-cutting measures that were implemented in fiscal year 20 to help mitigate those losses in revenue. I do recommend that we continue to defer part-time and underutilized staff to defer overtime or to require employees who are experiencing overtime to take that as comp time off instead of actual overtime pay. I'm also recommending that we continue with our travel training reductions or deferment so that any non-essential travel or training should, should be deferred until after the pandemic is over. Equipment materials and supplies, contractual services, professional services, I'm recommending that we also defer those and that no non-essential costs should be incurred for any of those items. Vacancies. Right now, we have them deferred until January the 1st, and I recommend that we keep it as January the 1st and looking reevaluated in December. Capital outlay fund, right now, no expenditure, no new projects in the capital outlay fund are to be, to have expenditures incurred in them. However, I did want to come back to the sheriff's request for vehicles, because we do have a potential 4.4 million in transfers to the capital outlay fund, and because those vehicles do take quite a while to come in, and because he can, he can cancel the order. So, you know, if we find in January that 4.5 million dollar surplus is no longer available, he can cancel the order then. But because of the surplus that we currently have that could be transferred to the capital outlay fund, I do recommend that we allow him to place his orders only because they take so long to come in, and the orders he placed last year in May didn't come in until February. So if he doesn't, or if he orders those now, they, they may not even come in until next fiscal year, because all of his manufacturing plants have closed down as well. So that's through that original deferral that he, you know, the delay that he was already experiencing. So even if he does order them now, I have a feeling they're not going to come in until June or even July.
Well, I would like the information on his vehicles and their age and what he's looked, why he needs, what's he going to replace, you know, he doesn't have more employees, so which ones are he going to retire? And, you know, their mileage, and just give us an idea of how fast we're going through these vehicles.
Okay, we can do that. I can get that on the agenda for the next session to go over that with.
Thank you. I appreciate that, too. And also, are we replacing vehicles that he's obtained through grants? You know, you know, that's just going to increase, you know, if that's happening, you know, that's something that I have a concern about because, you know, there wasn't, county money wasn't involved in purchasing those. So I think that's something I'd like to know.
No, I think he's got around 30 deputies right now, and the average replacement cycle for deputy vehicles is about five years. So.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a lot of cars.
Now he's only doing five because he's able to typically find funding for the sixth one, either through his home confinement fund, his forfeiture fee, or grants. So he's been very creative in supplementing money he receives from the capital outlay fund. But we'll bring you that information and so that we can make a better informed decision.
Right, right.
Thank you.
This is Josh. I thought he mentioned that during budget time regarding the vehicles. Am I incorrect on that, or? I thought he mentioned actually why the vehicles need to be replaced.
He did, and they are included in the budget, but I think Commissioner Nolan just wants to confirm which vehicles are being replaced and make sure that, you know.
We have the cash, cash to handle the payment. I mean, we think it's going to take longer, and it probably will, but we still need to know we have the money to pay for them.
Yeah.
That, yeah.
And is our budget going to be impacted later because of the vehicles that he's been able to acquire through grants?
Yes.
Okay.
And that is everything I have on budget revision number one for the general fund. I have questions about that?
I don't have any questions, but I'll make a motion to approve budget revision number one as outlined by our financial director.
Second.
Okay. All right, we have motion before us, approve fiscal year 2021 state budget revision one for the general fund. Any more questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, and then the second budget revision I have is for the coal severance fund. Similar to the general fund, the state requires us to update our beginning fund balance for the new fiscal year to mesh that of the end, year's ending fund balance. So at the end of fiscal year 20, the ending fund balance for fiscal year for the coal severance fund was 206,328. So I'm increasing our assigned fund balance of 102,000, it was an estimate, by 103,59 to our actual ending fund balance of 206,328. And usually, the offset for that is just the county commission line item, and then as we receive requests throughout the year, we allocate funding out of that 401 to whatever line it.
Yeah.
So now, for fiscal year 21 and the coal severance fund, the amount we have available for other purposes is 255,007. So that's something we need to keep in mind as we receive requests like from the, from Parks and Rec.
Right.
We have that money available, too, to help supplement them.
Okay. I thought we were limited on coal severance expenses to one-time expenses, not salaries. Is that correct?
There is a small percentage that we can only use for salaries, so you're correct.
Okay.
A small percentage. I can't remember if it's 16 or 26%. It's, it's around 20, 25%.
Okay. Well, I'll make the motion that we approve fiscal year 2021 state budget revision number one for the coal severance fund as presented.
Second.
Have any other questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, one thing I want to go back to, and that was under your general review of the budget to actual as of 6:30, 20, you recommended that the cost-cutting measures that were implemented in fiscal year 20 to be carried forward into fiscal year 2021, at least into January. That was my understanding. I think we, we would be on firm ground to make that motion as a part of a review of the budget. And I will make that motion and hope, look forward to hearing your comments. So I move that we continue the cost-cutting measures that were implemented in fiscal year 20 and carry them through to at least January 1, 2021.
Second.
Okay. Do we have any more comments or questions about that?
No, I just agree that that should be done until we see where we are.
Right, this future is pretty uncertain as far as the impact of COVID, so. But we have had a few little pleasant surprises. More beer and wine are being consumed and we're getting the tax benefit.
It's because all those, all those parents having to homeschool their kids.
Josh, you were saying something?
Well, we may have some other issues with that positive, so.
Well, you're right, you're right. Trying to look for the sunshine here. Okay, all those in favor of the motion to continue the cost-cutting measures, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All righty. Thank you, as always, very detailed, and you've got all the figures there. Thank you, Michelle, for your hard.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Do we have, is it too early for Nathan, or is Nathan online, or?
He is, but did you want to go ahead and do the two new business items?
Yes, I, I thought we could, and we can leave Nathan, I see his face, but we leave you to the last to give us greater flexibility in case we have to go into executive session. Is that all right with you, Mr. Cochran?
Sure, I'll try to continue to believe that's why you're making me laugh, but. I understand. That's a smart move, it really is.
Okay. All right, I'll move down then to under new business, item number eight. Discussed request for funding the COVID-19 pandemic block grant of $100,000. Stephanie, I think you have all the details on this.
I do. So this is the grant that the governor gave to us a while ago, probably back in April. And when he, during the press releases, he referred to it as being used for hero pay, but then when we received the, the actual letter, it had to be spent on CARES Act expenses that would be eligible for the CARES Act. And many counties have still not spent this money because it's the county commission who has to be responsible for the funding. You know, so we have to account to the state as to how we've spent this funding. So we did get four requests. Two of them, or three of them from the fire departments, and I just want, there was some public comment about this. We did send it out twice to every fire department in the county. And I also mentioned it on our task force calls that, you know, we had put out this grant application. So I created kind of a little mini grant application. It wasn't, it wasn't very complicated. It just asked them to explain why they were applying for the funding and to attach receipts if they had them. And so for the three fire departments, they have already incurred those expenses, and they did attach receipts, and it looks like it's all in order. I don't know why the other two fire departments didn't, or the other, sorry, not two.
Four.
The other four fire departments didn't, didn't apply. You know, I spoke to Director Alan Kaiser during one of our department head meetings, and he indicated that the ESA was actually buying a lot of the PPE and depositing, giving them to the volunteer stations, which is the way that I would prefer that it work because we can ask for reimbursement through the ESA, and we have been for their expenses. So if they're buying it for the volunteers and then getting, and giving it to their stations, that's directly reimbursable to us and then back to them through the CARES Act. But some of the fire departments also bought their own at the very beginning, and, you know, we, there was such a shortage, we just didn't know. Everybody was just trying to, trying to cover all their bases. So those, those three, they've attached receipts, the expenses have already been incurred, and it looks like they're eligible CARES Act expenses. The other two. The other two are for expenses that have yet to be incurred. One is from community ministries, and if you decide to fund those, I don't think that we can just give them the money. I think we're going to have to ask them to report back like an actual grant, so we would have to, we'd actually probably have to administer that grant and make sure that they're spending it the way that they said they would spend it, and that, and so it would be like, you know, when we get a grant, we spend the money, and then we submit our expenditures and ask for reimbursement, and it would be the same for those if you decided to fund those two requests. One is from community ministries, which looks like they are relating their expenses to the COVID-19 pandemic. They're expecting with people, you know, out of work. They're losing, you know, there's going to be an increase in homelessness, and I think the city of Charleston, as I reported in the meeting to go, is, you know, is already has a task force to kind of address this issue, and that's what community ministries expenses are related to, basically providing shelter for an increase in homeless. And I have there, if you want to see any of the applications, I could forward them to you if you, you know, if you want to take the time to look over them, because we did not, we didn't put them in the agenda. But if you want, if you want to delay actually voting on this item to fund these items, I could send you all of the applications for you to look over. The other request was for Shepherdstown Shares, which is a 501(c)(3) organization in Shepherdstown. They're requesting money to kind of start a pantry, which they say is related to the COVID-19 pandemic, they're giving out food, and they think, they say it's related to the economic impact of COVID-19. And it, no, it, it may well be, and they say that they're working in conjunction with Jefferson County Community Ministries, who we have provided, we used to provide funding to community ministries when we had the funding to provide, when we had excess funds in our budgets, we used to fund community ministries every year. We don't do that anymore, we have funded them on kind of a piecemeal basis when they come for items, and we have the money to give, we have provided that in the last couple of years, but it's not a recurring item in the budget. But so the Shepherdstown Shares organization, it's that they are using, they are working in conjunction with community ministries, and they're going to set up a pantry for, and they have space donated by Trinity Church to, to buy the supplies they need to, to provide food in the community, and they believe that it's related to the COVID-19 pandemic. I think it probably is, but with us having to report to the state, you know, I just want to make sure that it's something that the state isn't going to say wasn't an eligible expenditure, and then we're on the hook for that. And maybe there's a way that I could reach out to someone at the state before we provide that funding to say, this is something that we thought, you know, we want to make sure before we provide the funding, because, I mean, we can't, we can't very well ask for it back, so we would, it's not, you know, an expenditure that would be permitted under the CARES Act. And I will tell you, many counties have not spent this money at all because they're unsure what to do with it, and they are afraid of getting in just that situation. So there has been some, the auditor has released some guidance, but it's not really specific. There has been an opinion, though, on the auditor with regard to providing it for volunteer fire departments, and they did say that that was an eligible expense that we ordinarily would provide funding to fire departments, and so we could provide, we could use a hundred thousand for that. So I don't know if you want to see, we, it's only about a little less than sixty thousand, so we'd still have forty thousand to spend. We, of course, could spend that on our own expenditures as well, but we've been getting reimbursed through the CARES Act funding, so we haven't used any of it for, for any of our own expenditures that would be eligible for CARES Act because we've been submitting those reimbursements directly to the state. So you have several options today. One is to delay providing any of the funding into, if you wanted to look over all of the applications that were provided, you could provide the funding to the three volunteer fire departments as they've already expended, you know, they've provided receipts, they've already incurred the expenditures, and it looks to be in order with the CARES Act. And then review the other two and set up, and maybe have, direct me to reach out to the state to see if they would be, if those would be considered eligible expenditures. Or you could vote to fund all five of the applications today.
Okay.
Well, I'm not comfortable with funding to, the two, the community ministries and Shepherdstown shares, because we don't have information to ensure that it's permissible under the CARES Act. I don't have a problem with the fire companies because that seems to be right in line with what it can be used for. So I would, I would move that we delay funding to the twenty thousand for community ministries and twenty-five thousand for Shepherdstown shares, but approve the other three expenditures to independent Shepherdstown citizens.
I'll second that motion. Sorry, go ahead.
No, you seconded it, I'll make discussion.
Okay, discussion.
I was going to say, I'm a little concerned that the money sits in the bank for forever, and, you know, it's meant for basically emergency purse. My view would be to fund the fire companies and give five thousand each to the two things. See how they do. If they do well, then we can increase them. But that's my view on it.
And I'm not suggesting that you not fund those applications, I just, because they haven't incurred any expenditures, they're actually looking to start a pro, both of them are looking to either expand programs or start programs. So I just want to make sure that they would be eligible, because if we give them money, I think we're going to have to have them incur the expenditures and then submit for reimbursement, so we can review the receipts, so we can ensure that the money, because the state requires us to account for it. And I do want to say that we do have to spend the money right now by December thirty-first, twenty twenty, that there is a deadline.
Okay.
On that funding. What I would do is, is, is send this grant application out again to get more, excuse me, to get more.
Applications.
Applications, sorry. My office phone rang and I got distracted.
Okay.
So that's, I just want to be clear that we would, for the two that haven't incurred expenditures, there's going to have to be more, more legwork for us here in the office to ensure that they're actually spending it in accordance with the CARES Act and that it meets those constraints.
Well, I would be more interested in more information from the state, since this is a, it's not reimbursing, you know, expenses that have already been incurred, it's for future programs that would hopefully help people that are impacted by COVID-19. And I'm sure the need is out there, but we need to make sure it's all covered under this block grant. And two, as we move forward, and if we send this out again, we have to make it clear that it's for COVID-19 expenses, and this is a one-time, this is not a line item in the county commission budget for continued funding or anything, or any implication that it will be.
And I think, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Sorry. They know that, I think they, they know that this hundred thousand dollars, those of the organizations, or all of the organizations that applied know that it's something that we received.
Okay.
From the office for a one-time expenditure. And certainly it is, I mean, we've done some of this, you know, we've, we've expanded our IT infrastructure.
Yeah.
Which maybe we will always wanted to do, but, you know, we just didn't have it in the budget, and we've expanded it, not to take advantage of the CARES Act funding, but to say, but we had people working from home, and so we needed to expand some of that infrastructure. So, you know, it's possible that it could be like a regular expense, but it's also related to COVID-19. I just want to be sure, so that the commission isn't getting into, getting themselves into any, you know, into territory where we would have to pay the state back because we provided funding wasn't.
And I concur with that, I think that we should be certain that it's allowable before we actually provide the money.
Okay. Any more comments or questions on the motion? And I'll endeavor to repeat it, that we move ahead with the COVID-19 block grant requests from independent Shepherdstown and Citizens Fire Company, and ask for more information and verification for the other two from community ministries and Shepherdstown shares, that it actually qualifies for the, this type of grant. Is that pretty accurate? You, you okay with that, Patsy?
Yes, that's fine, that's good.
Okay. All right, the motion is on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you for your work on this, Stephanie. I know you've taken quite a bit of time trying to get this ball rolling, and I will remind the fire departments too, the others, that they can apply.
Madam President.
Twice.
Yeah, I know. Yes, Mr. Lawrence Eddy.
Oh, just some, not a minor point, but I noticed on my Facebook that it was Nikki Painter's birthday today, and I thought.
Oh, okay.
She ignored that, but I think we should say happy birthday, Nikki.
All right. Well, if we'd known that earlier, we could have sung it to her in person, you know? Happy birthday, happy birthday, Nikki. Let's see, well, I'm going to hand the reins of managing the meeting over to Mr. Lawrence Eddy, Commissioner Lawrence Eddy, for item number nine. It's a renewal of lease of agricultural land, so I will sign off for now.
All right.
Ralph, do you want me to?
I go ahead and explain, I guess the question will come up from one of our commenters, whether we advertise this time.
Well, we did not, because the, we advertised last year, and the contract that we signed was the option to renew for five years, and then we'd have it out again. And that's kind of a standard term for bidding services that are recurring. So Mr. Tab did send, and it requires him to in writing indicate that he is interested, that the farm is interested in renewing the lease. He did indicate that he was interested in renewing that lease, so this would be the second year of that five-year renewable turn, so it is renewable at his option, and he did indicate that he does want to renew that lease.
And Stephanie, do you remember?
Five years, go ahead, sorry.
How many acres and how much per acre was the lease for?
I had this up yesterday.
Seventeen acres.
It's, yeah, seventeen acres, and it's a hundred and fifty-seven dollars an acre. So yeah, seventeen acres, and then a hundred and fifty-seven dollars an acre.
Does that require us to, since it's, since it is automatically renewed unless he chooses not to, does that require action from the commission or just information?
It does have to be approved by the county commission in the contract, so I, the way that I wrote it, I subject your written notice from the tenant and approval by the county commission, so it does require.
And I guess a question I should ask, has he paid for last year?
Yes, he paid immediately upon us entering, signing the contract.
All right.
And then paid again, and we had to, we had to send the check back, so he, they, he did make prompt payment.
And of course, to disclose, you know, he is the son of the commission president, and she is taking herself out of the discussion of this. I'll make a motion that we approve the, that the, well, I'm trying to figure the right term, that we approve the continuation of the contract for the additional year as specified in the contract, or for the next year of it.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a quick comment, I'm just, I'm wondering what the effect of the solar amendment to zoning, if it's approved, would have on the cost of leasing land in the county? I just, I mean, if that is approved, maybe subsequently, we should look at the cost of leasing land, if it's driving up the cost of leasing land. So, other than that, I, nothing.
Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. It sounded like it was unanimous. Thank you. Stephanie, anything else on this issue?
That's it?
So. Someone want to tell Jane?
Yeah. I think she's, is she still?
I've been, I've been looking at faces and trying to determine if it was the end of the discussion, so. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Lawrence Eddy, for filling in there, and we're moving on to our assistant prosecuting attorney, Mr. Nathan Cochran, and all the items under number seven. Nathan? There you are.
For, for today, I am just pointing out that the fourth item down on the list, the West Virginia Supreme Court case nineteen dash zero four one two with seventeen C two eighty-two in Jefferson County, is the annexation case, and that is still scheduled for oral argument at the Supreme Court on September the fifteenth, so just pointing that out.
Nathan, you have to, you have to put a suit on when you zoom in for that?
I may have to for that one. So, anyway.
Or at least a coat, tie, you know?
Something like that.
And slippers.
Yeah, yes, that's right, it'll still be slippers if, I'm in my office today, so I'm actually wearing shoes. I would like to move then down, the only other thing that I really need to discuss with you is the, the sixth thing down, report by counsel is previously assigned by the commission regarding the fire board, the ambulance service organization of that, the structure, financial issues, matters related there too. I would, I would have some matters that I need to share with the county commission because they involve liability issues potentially, or other matters that are attorney-client privileged. I need to request that we go into executive session or suggest that. And also, I may have a comment regarding the very last item on the list, the, the issue related to the Historic Landmarks Commission, but that also would be a matter of, of legal advice and potential, just legal issues that I need to give you some attorney advice for.
Well, this is Patsy, and I'll move that we go into executive session to discuss a, a report by counsel as assigned by the commission for the creation of the Jefferson County Fire Board, Jefferson County Emergency Ambulance Service Board, and organization of Jefferson County Emergency Services Agency, including potential structure, financial issues, and matters related to there too. In addition to discussion of Department of Interior Inquiry 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 for Historic Landmarks Commission for docket number PCR NPS dash zero four dash two zero, and this is to obtain for liability issues and to receive attorney-client privileged information.
Second.
Okay, the motion before us is to go into executive session. All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we'll go out of Zoom and go into the other link.
Stephanie, I'm going to go take a short break while we're waiting. I'll be right back.
Hello, do you have me on this one?
Yes, we can hear you, Jane.
Okay, is everyone else on?
Patsy took a break, so we're waiting for her to come back.
Okay.
But we have everyone else.
I couldn't rejoin the webinar, so I guess I need to reboot my whole computer and see what's going on here. That's weird. Let me know when Patsy's back online.
I'm back. Are we still waiting for Jane and Caleb and Josh?
Everyone is, everyone is on. And Jane called in, so she is here, I think. Jane, are you still there?
Okay.
Yes, I'm still here.
All right, so we have, Patsy's back, so we have Caleb, Josh, Ralph. Yeah, we have everyone.
Okay. I will make the motion that we come out of executive session and resume regular session.
Okay.
Okay, motion's before us. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We're in regular session.
And I will move that we authorize Nathan to contact outside legal counsel with regard to the fire and ambulance issues we discussed during the executive session.
Okay.
Okay. We have any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Stephanie, that motion passed. I don't think we have any other business except for your report and county commissioner report.
Muted, Stephanie.
We already, my report will be pretty brief. We already talked about the meeting that we're having with Fire and Rescue earlier today when we approved the minutes. Also, there will be a remembrance ceremony that Independent Fire Company hosts every year. That ceremony is on Friday, September 11th, and it is at 9:58 a.m. at the fire station. So you have been invited to that. We sent that out by email, but I just wanted to remind you about that. We had a dispatcher that did test positive for COVID. However, it, she was not, the dispatcher was not exposed here, but she did receive a positive test. She, the dispatcher was asymptomatic the entire time and has since returned to work. We did test all of the employees who were exposed to her, who had worked shifts with her. We have all of those tests back. They all came back negative.
Wow.
However, yes, we may, I may be asking you if, if those dispatchers who got tested received bills for those tests, I may be asking the commission if they would cover those tests since we asked them to get tested so that we didn't risk exposure to more dispatchers. We're working through the issues right now, so I'm not sure if there would be anything, and I do think that that probably may be a CARES Act reimbursement expenditure. But we, we avoided a disaster because unfortunately that dispatcher not only worked with their regular shift, they also had worked overtime, so they worked another shift. But every test came back negative, so we were at full staffing.
Okay.
But I just wanted to let you know that that did happen. We worked with Dr. Reedy to coordinate a response. We followed the CDC guidance for essential employees. We had a, it happened on a Friday evening. We found out about it. We had a phone bridge at about 8 o'clock at night with all the impacted employees. You know, Dr. Reedy was very helpful in helping us coordinate the testing for employees. Their test results came back very, very quickly.
Good.
So that is, that is the only thing that I have. I did want to talk about the, the meeting that we're having with Fire and Rescue and the ESA. Did you want that to be a virtual meeting? Or did you want to meet in person? And if you want to meet in person, where would that be? And I don't know that we need to decide that today, but maybe think about.
Isn't that scheduled for, when is that scheduled? November? Isn't that scheduled for, when is that scheduled? November?
Yes, November.
Should we evaluate that once? Well, unfortunately, I don't think things are going to change much, but.
I think we can talk about it closer to the date.
Yeah, but, yeah, it'd be difficult to do it all, all online. I know that. But it may be what we need to do, given the circumstances, but we can think some more about that and really have to think it through because it could be, we might have to re, I'm just thinking, you know, off the top of my head, one representative from each fire department instead of, you know, five or so from each fire department, things like that.
We could use our GoToMeeting platform, but I think in order to have that discussion run efficiently, you may want to limit each fire department to a representative so you don't have,
Right.
you know, people kind of talking over each other and expressing the same opinion over and over again.
Well, that's right. Either in person or if we have to do it virtually, it's, we're going to have to maybe eliminate, just have one spokesperson per fire department. As you can see, my cat has joined me at the desk. I rebooted my computer and was able to get back in this meeting fine, so something was funky there. All right. Anything else, Stephanie?
Um, yes. So there is in your packet, under information, we had received a motion to remove a planning commissioner. And I think Nathan is prepared to discuss that with you. It was by Mr. Aginson, and he's asking to remove Commissioner Steve Stolliver.
Can Nathan just give us information? We will not be able to take any action because it's not an agenda listed item, correct?
Well, you have, you have the motion there. Apparently, Mr. Aginson is alleging that Mr. Stolliver, the best that I can discern is in violation of the Ethics Act. I think the cause of that, of course, the commission can do whatever they want with this, but it would seem to me that, that we do not have any opinion from the Ethics Commission that, that a violation has occurred, and so at least in his, in his statement to the commission that you have in front of you, there hasn't been any allegation that there has been an ethics opinion. So I would think that it might be premature for the commission. I understand you couldn't act on it today anyway, but it may be premature for the commission to act on something like that unless there is some violation noted by the Ethics Commission. I will note that, that the same, the same citizen made an allegation against Mr. Stolliver, I believe in 2014. That was an ethics violation apparently before the Ethics Commission, and the Ethics Commission is my recollection. The record could correct me, but I'm pretty sure that they investigated that, and I know that they issued a dismissal order and found no probable cause to exist that there was, was an ethics violation. So I would, I would think that before this commission moved to deal with an alleged ethics violation, that it would be appropriate to have something in hand from the Ethics Commission that said that one existed, especially in view of the prior allegation that apparently did not prove to be, to have probable cause.
Okay. Anything else on your report, Stephanie?
No, I don't have anything else to report.
All right. We'll move on to county commissioner reports. Mr. Compton, have anything you want to share with us?
Yeah, I'll be brief. So Solid Waste Authority, there's a, one of the members moved out of Jefferson County. He was a PSC rep. We have a new PSC rep, Mr. Ray Bolyard, so he'll be starting next meeting as the PSC rep. They're looking forward, I saw in the agenda packet, there was a letter from the Board of the Solid Waste Authority for the county to redo the litter ordinance or the recycling ordinance, so I hopefully see that on future agenda. Parks and Rec, obviously, ongoing financial issues as we've discussed every meeting. Some good news, there's a new playground at James Height Park. And it's a really cool playground, too. I mean, I'll be there once my kid can walk a little bit better.
Oh, just wait till he can run.
Don't, don't, yeah, don't remind me, Jane. The playground was made possible by grants and donations mainly. The Levitt Foundation, the National Park Service, and the Parks and Rec, so that's some positive news coming out of Parks and Rec community. It's also ADA compliant with certain playground equipment, so that's huge. And I just want all the members of the community to realize there's a mobile Parks and Rec van that goes around the community offering free fun for county residents at no cost, so keep an eye out on the Parks and Rec Facebook page.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lawrence Eddy?
Nothing much to report. Planet Commission meeting next Tuesday night. Just a thing of information, the WVU is going to have a dedication for their new facility in Shepherdstown, and my wife is probably going to be one of the staff doctors there, but that's just general information. Otherwise, I don't have anything else.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Hudson?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Commissioner Nolan?
Well, I have a couple, just actually just a couple things. I participated in a courthouse facilities improvement authority meeting last Tuesday, and they're struggling since the concealed carry permit has been pretty much eliminated from the fee, from fees which courthouse facilities receive. They're struggling to be able to meet the demand for courthouse repairs and just trying to come up with alternative ways to fund, to fund those repairs. So, and then the only other thing I have is that continuing to work on the strategic plan on the development authority. So those were the only two things that I had this week, or the last two weeks.
Okay. I just, let's see. I attended a fire and rescue meeting earlier in the week, and they are focusing on the combined, the possible combined fee and how that may be accomplished. And then, not a county commissioner duty, but I'm on the Volunteer West Virginia Board, and we had a virtual board meeting. And it is pretty astounding how folks have adapted and done virtual community service. But it's kind of hard to understand some of those things unless you're in the program and participate, but they're, they're having AmeriCorps. You know, they're recruiting and using them in programs and all across the state, and it's pretty amazing what they're doing. Still community service, but a lot of it's not as hands-on as it, as it traditionally would have been, so. Okay. Is there anything else to come before the commission?
Adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Take care.
Take care.
Yeah.